I'd call the order of the August meeting of the Mayor and City Council. The City of Tawnytown asks Councilman Frazier to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Mayor Pro Tem Foster is again absent, recuperating from knee surgery. First item of business is the review of the amendments or approval of the minutes for July the 5th and July the 10th, regular meetings. Anyone care to make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
I'll second it.
They're second? If you'd a favor say aye.
Aye.
So carried. Next we have councilmember's statements regarding conflicts of interest on the agenda items. Does anybody have any conflict of interest on any items that appear on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, since I am named in Resolution 2017-11, censure request by Councilmember Frazier, I will recuse myself from voting for it, though I will have a statement in my own defense.
All right, would you like to make a statement?
I believe I'll wait until that time to make my statement.
Anyone else?
I'd like to recuse myself as well from the censure, since I am also named in it, and I've also prepared a statement to read.
By letter, Mayor Pro Tem Foster also has recused herself, but since she's not here, it's not going to make any difference. Do you have any statements to make, councilmembers?
No conflicts of interest, I think that's where we are in the agenda.
You don't think you should recuse yourself, too?
No, I wasn't there. I was in Africa during this secret meeting.
I mean, you're directly involved in this.
I wasn't subpoenaed by either side.
You're directly involved in an item here on--
To go-- by either side to go to court. I mowed grass during the fact that when all our councilmen were dragged into court.
Okay, well, I guess I have to recuse myself, too, because I've been named in some action here on the docket tonight, and I won't be able to take part in the discussion if there Resolution ordinances and agreements. We have for adoption Resolution 2017-10, water allocation for August. Anyone care to make a motion to approve the water allocation?
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next is Ordinance 11-2017 and Ordinance 12-2017, and this is transferring money from one fiscal year to another fiscal year in order to accommodate the purchase of a police vehicle that arrived before the end of the fiscal year. We care to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 11-2017.
So moved.
They're second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next we have Ordinance 12-2017, fiscal year budget amendment. Anyone care to make a motion to pass that budget amendment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. We have for approval tonight Public Works Agreement and Inspection and Maintenance Agreement of the Store Water Management Facilities for Evapco Lot 2. Anyone care to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
They're second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next we also have a Public Works Agreement for George's Bed and Breakfast. Anyone care to make a motion to approve that?
I'll move that.
They're second?
I'll second, then.
Ready discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next we have a Public Works Agreement that Revise the Meads Crossing Public Works Agreement. Anyone care to make a motion for that?
So moved.
They're second?
I'll second that.
All right.
All right. Any discussion?
Can I just mention that I'd like to thank everybody that did work on that, just between the city staff and everybody. I appreciate all their cooperation.
Okay.
Well done.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. City manager's report. Henry, what do you have for us tonight?
Well, I really don't have a whole lot new, other than the mayor gave me this class that he thought might be advantageous to everybody on council, and that is managing emotions under pressure.
It'll take place in September in Frederick and of course--
It's October 30th in Frederick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Starts at 8:30 in the morning.
So if you have interest in that, see the city manager, and we'll make sure you sign up for it, and the city will cover the tuition.
What day did you say that was, Henry?
October 30th.
30th?
They have it at other locations, but Frederick is the closest. It's Annapolis on the 31st and Towson on the 27th.
It would be beneficial for all of us to attend that meeting. Any questions for Henry? Any questions on the department reports?
No, sir.
Our attorney is not with us tonight, but do we have any questions that we could-- that we need to have answered through when he returns?
Nope.
All right, well, let's move into new business. Financial reports presented in the-- the pseudo-financial reports presented in the packet. Does anyone care to make a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
They're second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, is the accounts payable, including the account-- including the payment of the insurance invoices? Anyone care to make a motion to approve these bills?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I was troubled by the-- before we vote, on the discussion from the well over here about-- I really enjoy getting the reports, and I think it's an important part of our job to get check-by-check records, and if these were changed to just give us pie graphs of spending versus budget, I would be really sad to see that happen. I think it would stop the council from being as effective. I'm going to vote in favor of this. I just wanted to say that before we vote.
Again, councilman, I think you're mixing up the financial report and the accounts payable.
I was concerned about the discussion on Wednesday, as though there are some places where they've done that, where they've actually made it so the elected officials have very little say on what is done dollar-for-dollar.
Well, you see--
On the study since Wednesday of people who do pie graphs and things.
We haven't changed anything or even received a proposal to change anything.
Well, I'd like to direct the staff not to change anything. I think it's done exactly the way it ought to be done, where we get these reports and then we get the actual check record.
All right, well, the next item has to do with the checks, the fact that our financial report doesn't really have--
We should vote on this one first.
Well, there's no--
Didn't you make a motion second?
I made a motion and seconded the financial report, but that doesn't--
Yeah, and I voted yes on that.
Yeah, now we're on-- we have a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next we move into the accounts payable.
That was--
You already did.
That was accounts payable.
That was accounts payable.
Yes, it was, sir.
Oh, all right, I thought we were doing financial report. Ratification of the auditing services. We have a new auditing company. We need to approve that their contract is satisfactory. Anyone care to make a motion to approve the new auditing firm?
So moved.
They're second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. Next, there's a Resolution 2017-11, censure request by Councilman Frazier. Anyone care to make a motion to bring this before the council?
I'd like to bring it before the council to discuss it, and I would like to ask one of my councilmen to second my motion. On Wednesday, a person approached the well and handed out a copy--
Just a minute. We haven't got a second yet.
And so I would like to ask one of my councilmen to second it, just for matters of discussion.
Well, actually, everyone here except for Judy has been recused from this issue, so we can't talk about it at all. But if Judy cares to make that motion, we could talk about it.
I will second for the sake of argument.
That's good. That would allow me to say something about it, would allow you all to make statements in the proper order. I do not agree that Roberts' Rules of Order do not apply in city council meetings. I had gotten a copy of this, like you all did, and because the judge did find that the councilmen in question that were on the council last year, Vigliotti, Wance, and Fuller, did violate provisions of the open meetings law--
Can you correct that? That was not Fuller, that was Foster, I believe you're referring to.
Did I say that wrong?
You did.
Okay, my correction.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. I wouldn't want that to be in the record. No, Councilman Foster did violate it. Those are pretty well articulated in this. I had a chance to read this since Wednesday and to go over the oral record of the case, and I think it's a serious matter when councilmen break the law, and I think we ought to-- On the two previous times that I was harassed by censures, I'm not guilty of violating the attorney-client privilege. I'm not guilty of harassing the staff.
Well, you know, your opinion is one thing, and the circuit court judge's opinion is another thing.
Well, I know that you said--
So who shall we hold more credible?
You said on Wednesday, you said on Wednesday that you convicted me of that, that you are the one that found me guilty of that, and I believe that.
The city council's job is to find wrongdoing among its members and correct it.
Well--
And that's exactly what we do. You know, Don, I've been thinking about this, too, and it's so silly to have this resolution come before, because we're comparing apples and oranges. You're comparing a trial that was conducted for a circuit court judge where the judge found two minor offenses that we are committed to correct and that were not willful. However, council found on two different occasions where you violated human decency, basically, and divulged information that was confidentially provided to you, and harassed an employee. And--
I should have sued you before--
You were censored, you were censored because of your wrongdoing, serious wrongdoing, not minor offenses--
I'd agree with that.
Not unwilling offenses, but your offenses were willing.
I don't agree with that.
So it's completely apples to oranges, so it has nothing to do with the court case at all.
This has to do with the court case, and I have this a motion second, and I think that--
I think the judge that heard this case certainly has the ability to rule on this case.
And he has--
And if you disagree with it--
No, no, I don't disagree--
--then appeal could be filed.
I don't disagree with the things that he found these councilmen violation of. There were four counts--
Minor and unwilling, okay? Two items.
There were six counts in the original lawsuit. Four of them were found--
Two.
--a violation.
Only two.
And they were listed in this, and I agree with this finding.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The other way. Councilman Wanson, I should probably read our statements of recusal.
All right, let's do that. Why don't we just explain why everybody has recused themselves tonight? Brad, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. For over two years, I've served the people of Tawnytown in an honest and civil way. I've proudly made decisions that I believe are for the betterment of the city in which I was brought up. For nearly two years before my being elected, I was a fixture in those seats, often being the only person to observe these council meetings. I studied the council. I studied the proceedings. I made sure that I was educated in this local government and was prepared to be an effective servant. To be abundantly clear, I, Bradley Wance, was not found guilty of violating any laws. I acted appropriately in my capacity as a council member. My testimony was truthful and clear about my recollections of the legal closed meeting held more than a year prior to this frivolous lawsuit. And acting as a member of this council, the cooperative actions were, while mistakes based on technical grounds, not willful. There is no grand conspiracy in place. The majority of this council has made countless efforts to bring about a sense of unity in our positions, but this was met with further disruption, discourse, and deception from the adversarial side. I have been called a liar in public, with not a shred of truthful evidence to support this claim. I have been referred to as a drug dealer for voting to allow a legal business to locate in our city. I have had my picture plastered on tacky propaganda flyers along with my phone number that were aimed at inciting harassment against me. This has become the new Tawnytown. This has become the low point in our history. This is what our citizens are ashamed of. Richard Dreyfus, an admired actor, once said, "Civility is not not saying negative or harsh things. It is not the absence of critical analysis. It is the manner in which we are sharing this territorial freedom of political discussion. If our discourse is yelled and screamed and interrupted and patronized, that's uncivil." We can civilly disagree, we can share opposing positions, but the methods of yelling, interrupting, finger-pointing, and outright bullying is what makes this uncivil. But how else can people get their names and faces in the newspaper? If you don't make an absurd scene, how would anyone notice your grandstanding? How else can you advance your own political motives if you are not constantly in the spotlight? These serial adversaries suffer from tunnel vision for partisan politics. If you disagree with what they say, you are publicly labeled a liberal. If you want to be a Republican in Tawnytown, you need to go through them. And this corruption runs deep into our local clubs and our own central committee. It is this driving force that prevents progress in Tawnytown. It prevents civility in Tawnytown. It prevents Tawnytown from receiving the respect it deserves from other municipalities. We heard complaints of who would want to run for office in this city with these new campaign finance rules, but that's not why people will not run for office in Tawnytown. Why would anyone want to serve this city if they know that they will be unapologetically ridiculed in public without merit, or knowing that they will be unnecessarily dragged into frivolous lawsuits? Yet, after making unsubstantiated claims of the city council not following the city code, these people turn around and expect the council to violate the code by presenting a resolution themselves and not from a council member. In our city code, Matters Before the Council to be Sponsored, subsection 716, ordinances, resolutions, and other matters or subjects requiring action by the council must be introduced and sponsored by a member of the council, with the exception being the city manager may. And then subsection 719, Regarding Code of Conduct, as these rules and policies governing the mayor and council, only the mayor and council members may make a complaint for alleged violations. This is the hypocrisy that the people of Tawnytown have come to expect from these obstructionists. This resolution is an outrage. It is a slap in the face of the citizens of this city, but even more so, it is outright illegal. And when people believe that they are above laws, that they clearly do not understand, we find ourselves in the exact situations that we have been forced to endure for over two years. In conclusion, my actions have not violated the law. There are no grounds to censure myself or my fellow council members who have been named in this resolution. Finally, because I am named in this resolution as a subject for censure, I shall abide by the city council's code of conduct and abstain from the resulting vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak today.
Councilman, you've had your say. Let me continue on--
I am a city councilman.
Let me continue on with the other councilmember.
And I made a motion for this. I am a city councilman.
You've had your say.
I am a city councilman.
Brad's turn. It's now Joe's turn to give his comment. Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, almost a year ago, I asked Councilman Frazier to focus his energies on bettering the town, to work with us to bring about positive changes, and to leave rhetoric and dramatics behind for real results. I encouraged him to be positive and to be kind, leaving behind combativeness and name-calling. Unfortunately, things have only gotten worse, not beginning or ending with lawsuits, petitions, press conferences, referendums, but extending to our business as well. Rather than work with the mayor and council to limit marijuana dispensaries, keeping them away from parks, schools, and homes, Councilman Frazier opposed us at every turn, voting against the restrictions while accusing us of opening up the town to drugs. Rather than work with us over the course of almost a year to lower the water and sewer rates, Councilman Frazier instead voted against every step of the process, only to vote for the final reduction and both criticize it and falsely take credit for it. Rather than appearing at events, gatherings, and functions for the benefit and support of our community, Councilman Frazier has declared that he does not wish to be seen in public with us. Rather than engaging in constructive dialogue with the mayor, council, and city administration over the past two years, Councilman Frazier has increasingly polarized the council and escalated his invective to the level of vilification. I think it prudent to remind someone who is threatened to sue the city for emotional distress and damage to personal reputation what he and his supporters have falsely said and/or printed and published regarding the rest of us, that our mayor is a dictator, that the mayor, council, and administration are corrupt, that we are tyrants, that we are liars, that we are idiots, that we are cronies, that we are hiding money, that we are stealing money, that we are intentionally causing harm to citizens, that we attempted to suppress voter turnout, that we attempted to intimidate voters, that we took away the rights of voters, that we are constantly trying to scare citizens, that we always act unconstitutionally, that we constantly hold secret meetings at the Country Kitchen at Flick's Pub, that our city manager specifically is stealing money, that our city attorney charges exorbitant rates, gives bad illegal advice, and is a horrible lawyer, that I personally am corrupt, that I personally want to be dictator of Tawnytown, that I am a traitor, a Benedict Arnold and a turncoat, that I am power-hungry, and I have had my physical appearance as someone of Italian ancestry compared to a fascist slapping a woman in cartoon form on one of their flyers. If that was not enough, he also once informed the mayor, council, city manager, and city attorney that we would all burn in the Lake of Fire. And yet, despite all of this, none of us are suing them. Why? Because we hold the good of our city over our own personal selves, because we are here to serve the city and not ourselves, because we are here to enhance the name of the city and not our own names, because we are here to work together and not tear each other down, because we are here to deliver results, not engage in dramatics, because this is the nature of politics. People speak ill of you and your decision-making. That comes with the territory. It also comes with the territory of free speech. Most importantly, it is because we know we are not perfect, just as the mayor said on Wednesday night. We do not pretend to be perfect, and I hold myself up here before everyone tonight as proof of imperfection. We recognize that others are not perfect, and we do not hold this against them. And yet, tonight, we are confronted with an act of censure based on the very understanding that because we are not unfailingly perfect, because we are not without flaw, because we are only human, we are to be convicted. And we are to be convicted for technical infractions not willingly committed, but for which we atone by seeking to correct in future circumstances. Our code of conduct requires a willful violation of the law for censure. None of us willfully violated the law a year ago when, under the threat of lawsuit from the Fraziers, a fact confirmed by a court which sided with the city against Mrs. Frazier. And still, we seek to atone. As I am named in this act of censure brought forward by Catherine Adelaide and auxiliated by Councilman Frazier, it is a matter of honor, of politesse, and of procedural decorum that I hereby recuse myself from any vote pursuant to its process. Accordingly, I will adhere to any decision made by council regarding my censure tonight. Thank you.
Here's any comment?
I was going to let you--
Mr. Mayor? Just--
Mr. Mayor, there is annoyance in back of me that I have trouble finding any more of these--
I'm responding, you know? When you guys clap, I can laugh.
If the audience could just remain quiet, remain quiet during these discussions, please. It's not time for audience--
Those were not discussions, those were grave standing speeches.
Ma'am? Ma'am, please, don't talk.
We have a policy, we can't talk on Monday night. We don't--
Don, we're not quite finished yet, okay?
I wanted to ask--
Well, I'm not-- You don't have the floor.
No, I don't. Under Roberts' Rules of Order, I can ask a point of order of the chair.
You do not have the floor, councilman.
You do not have the floor.
And I want to ask--
I have another statement to read from Mayor Pro Tem Foster. It's a shorter statement, but she regretted she couldn't be here, but was very concerned about this action and wanted to share her feelings and have them made known before the public. So this is the statement from Mayor Pro Tem Foster. Ladies and gentlemen, to the act of censure of Mayor McCarron, councilpersons Foster, Vigliotti, Wance, brought forward by Catherine Adelaide and spearheaded by Councilman Frazier for the unfounded reason of the violations of the Open Meetings Act, I recuse myself from any vote on this matter. It is truly a travesty that two and a half years ago, into his being elected to the city council, the Councilman Frazier continues to malign the efforts of my colleagues by refusing to see reason, name-calling, and the constant barrage of frivolous lawsuits and conduct unbecoming a public figure. Our positions as council members come with a title honorable. Donald Frazier is less than honorable. The mayor and the council cannot and has not gotten any work done for the citizens of Tawnytown since Donald Frazier was elected. He has ran on a platform of lower water bills and presented an ill-prepared, physically irresponsible plan to do so. Instead, he has cost Tawnytown and her citizens thousands of dollars in litigation fees. These frivolous lawsuits will continue unless the citizens of Tawnytown recall the election of Donald Frazier to the city council immediately. Respectfully permitted, Diane Foster, Mayor Pro Tem. Now, my final statement, and I'll let you make a comment or two.
I can ask a point of order.
As soon as I make my final comment. As you've heard from these council people, we're kind of at the end of the rope with this stuff. It's got to stop. We've got to get on with the city business. And I truly, truly sincerely ask you, Congressman Frazier, to either become part of this team and make Tawnytown a better place, or submit your resignation. That's the only request that I have. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, that what we have here is a travesty comparing apples with oranges. A circuit court found us innocent of the charges brought before it, and our omissions were unintentional and unwilling. And as I said before, the reason you were censored were for willing and malicious acts conducted on your part to affect badly on the city and its employees. And again, I ask you one more time, don't you think you should recuse yourself from this vote? Wouldn't you like to withdraw your motion?
No, I'm going to fail when I move it. I think that if you listen to the arguments Judge Daniels, that four portions of the act were violated and he found as such. I think that you misspoke now and on Wednesday night when you said you're innocent. It's a-- and so I brought this up today because--
I never said I was innocent.
The citizens of Tawnytown should know that these people have broken the open meetings law, and we need to have open government. I told the folks outside at my news conference that we had an open government raffle. that we had an open government raffle in my Republican club because we, we want to have open government. All the time spent tonight, all the time Wednesday spent tonight is your decision to do that. I wouldn't even brought this up on Wednesday night, certainly. I didn't expect these statements today. I, as far as a point of order, I have to ask you, Mr. Mayor, since you're the chair, what will happen if we go forward with moving this, if three people have recused themselves?
Well, their action can't be taken because nobody can vote on it, except for...
Yeah, and I think that Councilman Fuller was very kind to second my motion. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, since I was named...
No, no, we can't speak on Monday night.
Yeah, you could let me, you could let me, because I was named. It wasn't, this wasn't brought under the code of conduct.
I'm not, I'm not interested in hearing this from the audience tonight.
It was brought under the code of conduct. This was brought under the charter violation. The code of conduct says you have to be...
I am not interested in hearing.
This is a charter violation.
We're not discussing, this is a closed discussion among the members of the council.
Did you recognize Ms. Adelaide?
Joe, you misquoted the law there. It was a charter violation.
The motion has been moved and seconded.
Charter violation, not a code of conduct. Read it. It says you violated the charter.
Have you recognized Catherine Adelaide?
Please, don't talk. We got three people talking, and I can't hear anything. You shouldn't be talking. You should be sitting down.
Have you recognized her at all?
No.
No, I did not.
Okay, then you, Ms. Adelaide.
Well, Mr. Frazier, they misquoted, it's not the code of conduct, it's the charter amendment.
I know, but if the chairman's...
Well, then forgive me for misspeaking.
...not taking comments, you can't make a comment.
It's a charter amendment. There's no...
Forgive me for misspeaking, that settles the question.
There's no criteria for a...
There you go. Councilman Wance apologized for misspeaking.
That's correct.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded.
Well, basically, your point of order, I, um...
My point of order is that there's not a quorum available to vote, so the motion will die.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to withdraw the motion then, and since I don't think you'll second for action. Will you second for action or just discussion?
That was strictly for discussion.
That's what I thought, and I appreciate that. I just want to point out before we vote, before we fail to vote, that I vote with the council ninety percent of the time. I vote with them on everything we did tonight, and about ninety percent of the time, I vote with the council, and it's just not true that I'm an obstructionist, but that's okay. I thank you for the consideration of this, Mr. Mayor, and the opportunity to speak. Appreciate that.
All right, let's begin. Do we have any other council member reports above and beyond what we've already talked about? I can start with you, Councilman Frazier, if you have anything besides...
I do. After this meeting, I'm going to the Hampstead Carnival, and I'm really excited about our role as a ministry here in town with the Agro Ministry and supporting the Fireman's Carnivals. I also am proud of this paper, The Northern News. It's called A Fresh New Breeze. I talked to the editor and asked him to include Tawny Town. We're in great need of an objective point of view from the press, and I subscribe to this. It's about thirty-five dollars. It's mailed to my house, as you can see, and it is mostly covers the news of Manchester, Hampstead, and Upper Co., but I think Tawny Town is northern, so if you would work with me, maybe we could get some advertising dollars to get a Fresh New Breeze in Tawny Town. I want to thank you for the opportunity to make this motion. I wasn't certain that you'd allow me to even speak tonight, and so I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wance?
Planning Commission is just continuing their work, as you can see from the Public Works agreements that came forward. They've been busy discussing things, and Councilwoman Fuller was very involved in a lot of that. We do miss her on the Planning Commission, and I'd like to remind the mayor that there is currently a vacancy in the Planning Commission. When you see fit to fill that, it would be appreciated.
Probably fill that next month.
Sounds great, sir, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You want to speak about the citizen who wants to ask for a change?
Which change are you referring to?
Home occupancy.
Is that ready to be brought up to council?
I think it needs to be surfaced.
We can do so. What the city manager is alluding to, there is a resident who lives in a residential district who would like the city code to change to allow their particular type of business to take place in their home. The Planning Commission has not gone into great detail, but it's something to consider as to whether we want to modify what businesses we allow in residential areas. Currently, it's a very limited scope. This particular one, I believe, is a photography business. From a personal point of view, I'm opposed to expanding businesses into residential areas, but the Planning Commission themselves have not heard enough to really make a decision on that. But be aware, it's on the horizon and keep it in mind.
We have to be very, very cautious about this. This comes before us every few years. Whoever has a particular business, it's going to be very innocuous, and my business won't matter if we change the law. But the problem is, it proliferates. You've got this business exception, that business exception, this business exception, and then some other. And now, all of a sudden, you've got a half a dozen businesses or a dozen business categories that are okay in residential areas. It makes no sense at all. So please, as your representative to council expressed the mayor's concern.
Absolutely. If you, if you remember back when I was a citizen sitting out there, I remember the council had a public hearing about allowing signage in residential neighborhoods, and I actually stood up, and there was some shock on the face of the council that someone actually spoke. And I spoke against allowing business signs in residential areas, and that's what this becomes. They want the business, and then they want the sign, because then their business isn't getting the traffic they want. And that's what this becomes. And I don't want my neighborhood to become, you know, covered in commercial signage because this person has that business, this one has that business, because we made it a free-for-all. So just to the rest of the council, be aware, it's on the horizon, there's talk of it, and the Planning Commission will discuss it further, and I'll report back. Thank you.
All righty. Joe?
Three very brief things. First of all, National Night Out, hosted by the Tawny Town Police Department and organized by Lieutenant Castello, was a huge success, and so we want to thank everybody who was involved. In addition, you know, the fire department and other businesses and nonprofit organizations who participated, other enforcement agencies. And in particular, we want to thank Carroll County Commissioner Steve Wance, Delegate Shoemaker, and State's Attorney Brian D. Leonardo. These are all individuals who attended our National Night Out up at the park. I want to point out to everybody that August eighteenth and nineteenth will be the Tawny Town Family Fun Days hosted by the Lions Club. They'll have food, games, and other exciting things. It's certainly worth checking out. I mean, I know I'll be there. And then tomorrow, between five and eight o'clock PM, over at the Red Door Boutique, a new small business is opening up called Haven Fibers, which, from my understanding, is going to be a yarn crafting business, and crafting business in general. And so I will be there as well. It's certainly worth checking out, and it demonstrates that our town is forward-looking. We are moving forward. We're doing good and amazing things all over the place, and this is certainly a summer worth getting out and participating. Thank you.
Judy, what do you have for us?
I honestly don't have anything.
Oh, my goodness.
I know, I know. Now I feel like I'm missing out.
No, you're the best.
Utilities.
I guess I don't either. I was going to talk about the Family Fun Days, but...
I'm sorry.
I know, I'll be there.
But sure, be sure to make that. That's, that'll be a lot of fun. The highlight of the time will be the Fancy Wheels Parade that goes off at four forty-five on the, on the Friday, so if you have wheels and they're fancy, please get in the parade. I'll be a judge. It sounds like fun. Okay, does anyone here to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, okay. Thank you all very much.